Stothard.
President.
Thompson.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Here.
Mulligan.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Franklin Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we pray for mercy, we pray for wisdom, and we pray, Lord, that this beginning spring and summer will be a little different than before. Help us, Lord, to get in front of the problem with our violence and our children. Help us to come up with a better plan of which we can encourage our citizens to have other options other than violence. And we put the problem in your hands, Lord, and teach us, help us to know how to deal with it. In the name of peace we pray, amen.
Amen.
City Clerk certified publication on Daily Record on April 29th. No, sorry, per Council, regular City Council meeting May 3rd, 2011. A current copy of Meeting Acts is posted in a white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
If you have a cell phone or pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Zoning ordinance on final rating plan board attachments, item number five. Ordinance to rezoned property located at 215 South 181st Street from R6, low-density multifamily residential district to LO Limited Office District. A planning board and planning department recommend denial.
Public hearing was continued to today.
Motion to stay open two weeks. Not continue the public hearing.
Is there a second? No lights. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Laid over two weeks and continue the public hearing.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number six through seven shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items eight through 12 shall be laid over for two weeks. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 13 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 14. Cut Time Bar and Grill, DBA, I Don't Care Bar and Grill, 5346 North 108th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, old location. And you have an amendment which changes the structure of the LLC.
Public hearing is continued to today. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I'm appearing here with Celia Reynolds, who will be the owner, and I guess our manager's not here yet.
He's on the interstate last night.
We, I don't know if you want to move us to the end, if you want him here. He's on his way, but he's not, not here yet. And I know Councilman Stothard had a couple of questions for him. So we'd be happy to move down to the end if you'd, end of liquor if you'd want.
Counsel's pleasure.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk.
We can lay it over to later in the meeting, whenever he gets here.
He should be here in about 10 minutes.
We don't need a motion on that.
Thanks.
Next item.
Item number 15. Old Settlers, 5250 South 21st Street, Class C liquor license, no application, old location.
Public hearing on item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents? Name and address, please.
Old Settlers, 5250 South 21st Street.
And your name.
Sherri Minshall.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved 7 to 0. Item number 16.
Thank you.
A World of Wine, 14450 Eagle Run Drive, Suite 220, Class C liquor license, no application, new location, you have communications opposing.
Public hearing on item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I'm Julie Kluber, owner Taravino. Do you want the business address?
Or your address?
One for...
Your address.
My address, 2322 South 35th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Cassie Gryson, Project Extra Mile, 11606 Nicholas Street. We're here on behalf of the Homeowners Association for their request. They were unable to be here this afternoon. I know there's been communication sharing their concerns, and they ask that we come and kind of echo those concerns. I think, you know, you see us here consistently supporting neighborhood residents when they have these types of concerns with increased hour density and the kind of nuisances that it can cause. And so we're here to just share that with you today and be here in support of those neighbors.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Mulligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Julie, could you return to the podium for a moment? I just want to clarify for the neighbors that do live close to Eagle Run Drive, but this is basically going to be a retail outlet for wine. Is that correct?
It is. Yes. When you walk in, it'll be very apparent that it's a retail store. I won't have any outside seating. My business hours will be from 8 to 9 on the weekdays and from 9 to 10 closing on the weekends, with a few hours open on Sunday. I will have onsite tastings, but they're all, they're by reservation, and I only have seating for 25 people. So I don't foresee having many large events in my store.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stothard.
I had a... Thank you. I wanted Cassie from Project Extra Mile to come back down, please.
Cassie Gryson, Project Extra Mile.
Cassie, when you said you are here to represent the Neighborhood Association, can you elaborate a little bit on their primary objection to it? And are they aware that this is just a retail with wine tasting? Or did they think it was going to be another bar?
It was the Homeowners Association, just to be clear, and the communication that we had from Helen Jane Bysen, I believe is how you pronounce her last name, her concerns were, it is a Class C liquor license, if I have that correct, that is being applied for, so that is an on-sale, off-sale, all, not just wine. It allows for the liquor and beer as well. I just point of clarification there. And they just had concerns with the outlets that currently are there, although right now you don't have that before you, that adding yet another license, they were just concerned with those nuisances that may come as a result. Clearly, this is a lower-risk type of establishment, we do realize that, but they're not here to represent themselves and ask us to be here.
All right, thank you. And Julie, then, could you come back?
Yeah.
You have to say her name again.
Oh, Julie Kluber.
All right. Are you primarily selling wine? Are you going to be selling liquor and beer also?
I will only have wine racks in the store. I may offer one to two out, or liquors, specialty vodkas, maybe some specialty gin. As far as beer selection goes, again, I will have some on premise, but that is only to satisfy the people that come in with the wine drinkers, if they're tasting in the store, that they would have something to buy too. So I only foresee having maybe 20 SKUs of beer at the most.
Okay. And you did say, but I want you to repeat it, you did say that the wine tasting will be by invitation or reservation?
Yes. I do offer, or I will offer a weekly tasting on Friday evenings. It's sort of a benefit for being part of a wine club. And, but my business hours, again, will be closing from 9 to 10. And, you know, people come and go, and it's a sampling sort of atmosphere, so you try a few wines and then you're ready to go.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. No further lights, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's granted on a 7-0 vote. Item number 17. Hunan Gardens Chinese Restaurant, 5916 Center Street, Class I liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Thomas Garvey, 101 West Mission Valley, on behalf of the owner, the shareholder, and the proposed manager, if you answer any questions the council may have.
Are there any other proponents?
Any opponents?
Public hearing's closed.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Garvey, I just had one constituent who's lived just to the north of the Hunan Garden for 50 years and was not understanding what a Class I license is, and just wanted to have me confirm with your client that she understood what a Class I is. It's on sale.
On sale only.
Right. No package.
That's correct.
Since they have a drive-through, this neighbor was concerned to make sure that they get that there won't be any of that going on.
Not for the liquor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's granted on a 7-0 vote. Item number 18. Blue Agave, 13615 California Street, Class I liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I'm here with the owner, investors, Pat Kelly, no relation, Brett Kler, also manager, Jason Tierney. This is the same management group that has Tanner's out north, which does, I think, a very good job of running a restaurant out there. It's the same group, and they're putting good investment in here, so we're here if we have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's granted 7 to 0. Item number 19. Big Horn Mountain Barbecue, 2524 South 13th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, old location.
Public hearing on item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents? Name and address.
Robin Whitman, 16234 Elm Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Any samples? Oh. Got good barbecue there. You'll continue the same...
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's granted 7 to 0.
Good luck.
Item number 20. Heartland Cafe and Catering, 2615 North Main Street, new application, no locations. The catering liquor license, they currently hold a Class I license.
Public hearing on item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Sharon Janowski, 21505 Cedarwood Road, Elkhorn.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move the approval.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's granted 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item number 21. Alderman's Bar, 3216 Lemonwood Street, request permission for an addition of the present Class C liquor license of a beer garden approximately 35 by 14 to the east.
Public hearing on item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mark McClellan, 1334 South 35th Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. McClellan, just wanted to confirm there won't be any outdoor music.
No.
If one neighbor can... Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. No further lights, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item number 22. Chevy's at 2607 North Main Street, request permission for special designated liquor licenses for dance and other events on June 24th, June 25th, July 16th, July 23rd, and July 27th from 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM with music until 1:00 AM.
Public hearing on item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Jeremy Edelman, 15824 Parker Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Jeremy, are these, are these going to be like youth dances, or is it just the ethnic dances, or what's, what is?
Mr. Thompson, the date on the 24th was actually going to be more of like an outdoor kind of concert. We have a band that night. The other dates on that would just be for a beer garden designation. We have events like a golf tournament and things where we kind of need the extra space to set up a fence so we can house the extra people we'll have for that event.
Mm-hmm. And I know before you were annexed that the 1 o'clock thing works because, you know, you have certain culture out there and you make it work. My colleagues, however, would probably appreciate some uniformity, and we've been telling everybody ever since this council came on that 12:00 midnight is the cutoff for music.
Absolutely.
Would you be amenable to that?
I would be, yes, I would.
Okay. With that, then, with the music at 12 o'clock...
Let's amend it to 12.
Amend it.
Yeah.
Okay. A motion to amend for 12.
Second. The lights, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's granted as amended.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Item number 23. Paulies, 4014-18, Lemonwood Street, request permission for special designated liquor license for a beer garden, June 17th through June 25th. Music would end at midnight.
Public hearing on item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, I'm Paul Grego, owner of Paulies, 511 South Happy Harbor Boulevard.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Grego, I just wanted to thank you for doing a good job again last year. We had no complaints in the neighborhood and...
That's our intent, of course.
And your security and fortifies and wristbanding and all that worked great.
That's, that's our intent, and we want to run the best show in town, so it's, we've been doing it for 27 years now.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Paul, I still think you ought to have a Trojan burger.
Johnny's told me that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion in a second, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved 7 to 0. Item number 24 is resolution that EHPPV Lottery Services is granted to operate at Big Red Satellite Keno location at Fire, Water, Grill, 7007 Grover Street.
Public hearing on item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 1124 Eight John Gop Boulevard. I have the owner here with me, and we're here to seek approval for the Keno applications before you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Now, let's go back to 14. I believe the manager is here. 14 is Cut Time Bar and Grill, DBA, I Don't Care Bar and Grill, 5346 North 108th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, old location with an amendment.
I do care. Public hearing is continued. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Again, I, he's a little bit late, but we're here now. Kind of take this out when you continue number five. We thought that was going to last a while. So anyway, sorry, sorry for the delay. This is Tyler Seaman. He's going to be the manager. He's here for questions. Celia Reynolds, the owner, is also here if you have questions for that. Same type of operation for the bar is included, or is anticipated. Councilman Stothard and I had a conversation where she was interested in making sure that Tyler, who has had a couple of MIPs in his past, that he takes the Certified Alcohol Training Program. He assures me he will, will do that, you know, forthwith. But without, we have any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents?
Cassie Gryson, Project Extra Mile, 11606 Nicholas Street. We're here in opposition of this request, and actually more in just to make note of his MIPs, his past history. In 2005, 2006, he had minor possession of alcohol, serving in the capacity of his manager, and I'm glad to see the request for responsible beverage server training, and perhaps the request could extend to the employees of this establishment in addition to. So we would echo that sentiment.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mrs. Stothard.
Thank you very much. Mr. Seaman, could you come back up?
Your name and address. My name is Tyler Seaman at 721 West Fourth Street.
Okay. And yes, as Mr. Kelly said, seeing that he had the two MIPs in the past, that was of great concern to me, and your age also, you were born in '86, so I'm assuming you're 24, 25 years old.
Correct.
Okay. And so that does concern me. You've never had any trouble with selling to a minor?
Never.
Okay. I would then be willing to make a motion to approve contingent upon that you take and complete a Certified Alcohol Server Training Program.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
What's the motion?
We have an amendment we need to work out first because they're changing the ownership of the house.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
We need a motion to approve the amendment, which changes the ownership structure.
Move the amendment.
Thank you.
The lights, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes a second time for potential conflict of interest. Now, as amended with your stipulation.
So move to approve as amended contingent that the manager, Tyler Seaman, takes and completes the Certified Alcohol Server Training Program.
Second.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes a second time for potential conflict of interest. It's granted as amended 601 passing. And that's all of liquor. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed.[1366.03]
Public hearings on agenda, item numbers 25 through 30 were held on April the 19th. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda, item numbers 31 through 43 and 45 through 50 begin now. Are there any proponents? You'll come forward, give your name, your address, and what item number you are testifying for. Items 31 through 43, 45 through 50, any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second. No lights, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Now item number 44, resolution that from Sunday, May 29th through Sunday, June 5th, Memorial Park shall be open 24 hours a day and allow visitors to attend the event after park hours and accommodate setup and tear down and overnight security for the wall that heals traveling Vietnam Veterans Memorial and Museum event. And there's an amendment to change those dates. We'll need to have a public hearing and then we'll need an amendment.
Public hearing on item number 44 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Now we need a motion on the amendment.
Second.
Well, it's the dates we're actually changing, but that's okay. That's close enough.
We have those dates available, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we do.
Just for the record, should we indicate that?
One of the dates that come two days earlier.
I didn't want to catch anybody off guard.
Should be May 27th through June 5th. The dates would be May 27th through June 5th.
Okay. We have a second and roll call.
It's on the amendment. Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gray, Jerem, Mulligan, Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended.
Second, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson, Festerson. Oh, it is amended the whole? I'm sorry. It's amended the whole. So that's right. I forgot about that. So we're done. Ordinance is on second reading. Item 51, ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Field Geo Tech Incorporated for providing material testing, inspection, and project management services for the project at 20th and Popleton area sewer separation.
Public hearing on item number 51 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 52, ordinance proof of contract with our broker for the purchase of a seven year subscription to Sendtech Classic Display Elements.
Public hearing on item number 52 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
53, special ordinance laying special tax for removal of litter group 2011-7.
Public hearing on item number 53 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
54, special ordinance laying special tax for removal or trimming of trees group 2011-8.
Public hearing on item number 54 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
55, special ordinance laying special tax for trees group 2011-9.
Public hearing on item number 55 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Appeal for bid rejection and related resolution, item 56. Western Engineering Company Incorporated appeals the rejection of their bid April 6th on OPW 52099.
Public hearing on item number 56 begins now. Are there any proponents?
There are. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Craig Nickram. I'm an attorney with Valentine O'Toole McQuillan &amp; Gordon here in Omaha and I'm appearing on behalf of Western Engineering in support of their appeal from the city's rejection of their bid in connection with project OPW 52099 residential and major street resurfacing at various locations in the city of Omaha. Members of the council, Mr. President, this bid by Western Engineering was the low bid for this project. It was timely submitted. It was however rejected as not compliant with the small and emerging, small business requirements of the city. In your packet, you should have some materials including a letter written by Robert Lesmeister of Western Engineering explaining what occurred in this instance. And what occurred really points up perhaps some problems with the bidding process and this particular program in terms of information flow and difficulty that may arise at certain times in attempting to comply with the requirements of the project and comply with the specifications for the project. In this case, again, Western Engineering, the low bidder, included in their bid and in their packet proposals from three separate qualifying contractors. One was Swain and the other was Toddco, the Barricade subcontractor, and then there was a small amount for an electrical subcontractor. The timing that led to the rejection of this bid is as follows. Western Engineering is getting their bid together. They are aware that there is a specification requiring a small or emerging business entity in connection with barricade type work for this particular project. They had planned on using Toddco. At that time, Toddco was not certified by the city. It's my understanding that there was only one contractor qualified that was certified and that's I believe River City Barricade, but they submitted no proposals for this type of work. Therefore, the exhibit A on our bid did not reflect, did not highlight the fact that Toddco was to be our subcontractor in connection with the barricade type work. The bid went in and with the bid materials, the bid materials included the Toddco proposal. So it was the information that Toddco would be our sub for that project was there and available. The bid was then rejected. Well, after it was rejected, we learned, Mr. Lesmeister of Western Engineering, learned that Toddco had been approved, it's my understanding, had been certified as a small and emerging business contractor the day of the bid opening, but had appeared on the list from Public Works the day before the bid letting. It's our understanding that our competitor was informed by Toddco that they had been certified because apparently there were communications between the two of them, the timing of which was, you know, to my understanding coincidental, but beneficial to the competitor who realized that Toddco was a certified subcontractor. Therefore, on the exhibit A, they required part of the contract, they listed Toddco, whereas we did not because we did not have that knowledge. And to our knowledge, there was only one certified contractor. Again, that certified contractor, River City did not bid the project. So what do we do at that point? We're the low bidder, approving our contract, sustaining this appeal, will save the taxpayers of the city over $35,000. Our people contacted the city in appeal. The letter did indicate, the letter from the city to Western Engineering did indicate that there were appeal rights and to do so within 10 days. And we timely filed an appeal simply indicating that, as I've said, and I don't mean to duplicate, but simply indicating, as I've said, we're using the certified contractors. We simply did not highlight that on exhibit A and we did not highlight that on exhibit A due to a lack of knowledge that, in all honesty, I don't think anyone can fault the representatives of Western Engineering for not having that particular knowledge at the time they filled out exhibit A. So we're before the council saying we've got a technical noncompliance based on a lack of knowledge due to our, from our perspective, due to no fault of our own. And we're asking that the council overrule the rejection of our bid and allow us to undertake the work. I would point out that, again, there are three contractors that we have listed, the small electrical part which is certified, and we did have Swain Construction listed as they are a certified small and emerging business entity. One other point, the ordinance with respect to this type of work, with respect to the small and emerging business bid process, ordinance 38564, it amended chapter 10, and it provides for penalties for noncompliance. Now, I will allow to you that I understand that this may not be a specific situation that is covered by this particular section, but I highlight this because I think it indicates that, given what's going on here, that the timing of the bids, the timing of the availability of information as to the certified contractors necessitates that there be some latitude in terms of addressing these issues. And 10206A and B provides that there are penalties for noncompliance and that the penalties relate to refusal of a subcontractor contractor to comply. And it talks about withholding payments and it talks about exclusion from bidding, which I realize are not applicable in this instance, but it does say that in the event that those sanctions are applied, then a notice in writing shall be given to the contractor prior to taking any action by the city and shall allow the contractor time to clarify or make corrections. I respectfully submit that as a matter of practicality and policy, that particular mechanism should be available for someone in a technical default on failing to properly fill out an exhibit A that lists subcontractors who are certified, when the subcontractors who are certified are included in that contractor's bid proposal. And that information is there. The fact that we were using certified subcontractors was apparent from our bid proposal. What this gets down to is we failed, admittedly failed, to include or list them on this exhibit A, this small or emerging small business disclosure participation form. As you can see, this is the one we submitted and it has Swain Construction listed there. It does not have the Toddco or Verger, the electrical contractor, listed there. For the reason I said, as to Toddco, Verger wasn't listed because they're like less than 1% of the project and they weren't on there. But on our amended exhibit A, we did clarify. So again, from my perspective, I would respectfully submit that the facts and circumstances here, policy considerations, and to my understanding, the applicable law would allow this appeal to be sustained and for, I guess, the awarding of the contract to the low bidder, my client, Western Engineering. Thank you very much for your time and for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Brett Nieber. I live at 4956 South 174th Street. I'm Vice President of Operations of U.S. Asphalt Company. To clarify our bid, we understand the bid document says, exhibit A specifically says, if this is not completed as per the specification says, that our bid will be rejected. It also outlines certain activities that are supposed to be covered under the small and emerging business. We check on a regular basis to see who is available for these small and emerging businesses. We were aware Toddco was a small and emerging business the day we submitted the bid. They were listed on our bid document along with Swain Construction and Verger Electric, which now is what our competitor is listing. Verger Electric has been listed as a small and emerging business for quite some time. So we would say that the specifications clearly state that if you do not complete this adequately, that your bid would be rejected. And that's what we would expect to happen to us if we were in the same situation.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. Kratz, would you please take a minute and just remind the council on these technical bid failure to comply, especially with the exhibit A, if we were to grant the appeal, your opinion on opening up the city liability for denying the apparent low compliant bid?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Since we've developed this particular program and even the prior one, we have always taken the position that the regulations, rules need to be followed exactly. And if there are technical violations, that the bid should be rejected. It's pretty clear in the forms that if it's not technically correct, that they'll be rejected. And we have done so on a number of occasions in the past.
Based upon that, despite the eloquent presentation from the council for the appellant here, I would make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second. No further lights, roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Appeal is denied on a seven to zero vote. Item 57, resolution of contract with U.S. Asphalt Company for OPW 52099 is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 57 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Stothard, Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Resolutions, item number 58, resolution that the attached Christian Worship Center, New Vision, Omaha, Tax Cement Financing Redevelopment Project Plan at 1417 North 18th Street containing 26 one-bedroom apartments reserved for homeless U.S. veterans, allocating tax cement financing to offset the cost of environmental testing, surveys, soil testing, architectural engineering fees, and public infrastructure improvements is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 58 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to just present the Christian Worship Center redevelopment plan. It is, as you're aware, a plan that will reduce or remove an underutilized site in the north Omaha area at 18th and, excuse me, 17th and Paul. And will provide affordable housing to homeless veterans. And this is a project that we would ask your approval for.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Phyllis Peterson, Central States Development, 740 South 75th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We are the development partner in this project. And we have funds from the Department of Veterans Affairs for 65% of the capital grants for this project. And I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 59, resolution attached Omaha Housing for the Homeless LLC Tax Cement Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1425 North 18th Street containing 14 one-bedroom apartments reserved for homeless U.S. veterans is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 59 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, Planning Department, City Planning. This is an adjacent housing project, housing development project at 18th and Paul. And it also provides affordable housing to the homeless population. With that, I'd ask your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Phyllis Peterson, Central States Development, 740 South 75th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We are the development partner in this project also. This project was awarded low income housing tax credits and any homeless individual that income qualifies can live there. So we wanted to be able to provide services to others than just homeless veterans. So I ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda item number 61 through 63 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 64 through 67 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 68 through 73 shall be held in the second reading.
Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda item number 61 through 63 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 64 through 67 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 68 through 73 shall be held in the second reading.
Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda item number